I'll call this meeting of the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Here. Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Little, here.
We have a few days up here.
Jelka?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here. Please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions.
I come in, try to get everything primed one day and then they'll want to two coat the walls. So that...
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing to take a motion on the agenda as received, as proposed, or amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, the agenda is approved. Next we will move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the boardroom, we'll first start, and we'll go online. Please state your name and address.
Aaron Stacy Roberts, 411 Almond Street. I've been down several times before on my concerns with threats intimidation and me not being able to get assistance in matters that should be looked into criminally. Most recent is ESPO 006003, where there was 109 acres of farmland sold in Buchanan County, in which I'm an heir to, and now I'm the administrator over it, and I have a court date to be back in court trying to get the sale recruited in July. What I'm finding in this matter is the same in the case in which, let me get the case number, MHO 13288, in which Dan Trackle played a part in having me put in a mental committal. The two common denominators between the two cases is the judge that's over it, Kellyanne LaCarre. In both cases, she has violated my constitutional right, the due process equal and fair protection under law. In the ESPO case, the farmland, I didn't get a notice to appeal the sale, nor did I get to sign a family settlement agreement, which I never would have when we didn't get fair market value for the farm. Got less than $300,000 for 109 acres, well over 1.3 million. In the MHO case, I was red flagged by Dan Trackle and some lady named Sharice Atkins, which we don't have a red flag law in the state of Iowa. I've had a person commit it before, and it takes a family member. What I'm trying to get to is when she's violating, as well as Dan Trackle being the head of safety, the safety director at that time, and he should know something a little bit about constitutional law, as mentioned to him by Tony Thompson in the last election when they ran against each other, how he violated my rights. And doing that, that is treason. I don't know whether you know yourself or not, Chairman, but it needs to be investigated, the criminal activity that sits in this board, as well as our city council, and our sheriff's office, and our police department, when he was acting as the chief, and still there. We need to look into the criminal aspect of it, and I want to give you an example of something you might be able to use.
Your time's just about up.
On May 20th of 1948, by the order, by the request of the members of the Black Hawk County, and also the Waterloo Police, they contacted Governor Ray and asked for assistance after my grandfather was accused of killing a person at the Raff Wright. This is involving our elected officials and law enforcement people. You need to contact the governor and see if they can start with some help, and if you would, being I've explained everything to a lady by the name of Anna, and she told me to have my children call her, when I'm telling them I've been living under Stockholm syndrome since case 9914612, which we also have interest in. That's the raping kidnapping of my daughter. And I'm out of time, and I'll be back next week so I can finish, but I would look for you to contact someone outside of this circle. Have a good night.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else in the boardroom with a public comment today? Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to make a public comment on something that's not an agenda item? All right. Hearing none, we will now move on to the claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures, that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the very settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Mr. Veder?
Hey, the total for the claims this week is $504,810.07 from the Sheriff's 6040 Fund. It's $582.79, and Michelle also wanted to highlight a payment made from opioid funds through One City United for professional services in the amount of $30,436.
All right. Any discussion or questions, Board? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Next we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer.
Morning.
Brief update on our roads. Our, we have a few staff members who are out mowing on the paved road system. That started just very recently, within the last couple of weeks. They're making good progress as the grass continues to grow. Tomorrow, we will have a deck pour on our Cedar Wopsy project, and I just wanted to show you a photo of that in case any of you have time, if you'd like to come out and take a look at this tomorrow. I need help. It was there. Sorry. So, here's the current condition of the bridge. If you'd like to come out tomorrow, about 7:30, weather permitting, probably a good portion of the morning tomorrow, we will be placing concrete. This is the Cedar Wopsy Road Bridge over Crane Creek. This is the deck replacement. You are more than welcome to join us. We can get you a hard hat and vest. Just let us know. We'd love for you to come out there. The last thing I wanted to mention is that yesterday Supervisor Little received a call from a resident on Rose Lane. I did, was able to speak with her after that. I did receive a few photos. I would like to go out there and look at that. Rose Lane is in the county. However, we have a maintenance agreement with the City of Waterloo to maintain the road, so I'm not quite sure the situation. It possibly looks like a water main issue, so I'll be looking into that, and I can certainly report back to you later in the week.
As far as we know, that was nothing that we did when they talked about the cones and the different things that were out there and markings and that type of thing.
Right, because we're typically not out there because we have the maintenance agreement, so I'm not quite sure why. No one knows who put the cones out there.
Yeah, when she said, she didn't say who she'd contacted, but she did mention that she'd contacted others. I did forward that to Nola Anderson at the city as well, that email, so to give you any help too.
I'll be checking into that, and I'll get back to you, to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other department heads or elected officials for any update?
Morning. I'm the HR Director, so really quick, just wanted to give an update on our open enrollment progress. So we have over, almost half of our workforce have completed their open enrollment through the new site on EASE. We've got about 12% that have started it and not completed it, and about 40% that have not started it. So we've been having a lot of meetings with workforce groups, such as the different departments across the county, and it's all going really well. Just wanted to stress the importance of completing that for your beneficiaries with the life insurance, as well as just to make your elections to confirm, continue, or make those changes. So, so far it's being received really well. People seem to like the app, or like the access to be able to see their benefits. They've been made aware of all of their benefits that are made available to them. Some didn't realize we had other voluntary benefits, so besides your typical traditional medical, dental, and vision. So that's been a good experience so far, so. And then I also wanted to talk about policy review. So we plan on meeting either next Tuesday after the board meeting, or next Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. And it depends on how big that board meeting is for next week. And we'll be covering some just kind of cleanup policies and others that will require a bit more dialogue. So Supervisor Schwartz and Supervisor Little are the ones that represent the Board of Supervisors on that policy review. And then we also have Grant Veder, myself, and Mike Trainin, so. And then, I think, actually that's all I've got, so. Oh, and, go ahead.
What's the deadline for open enrollment?
On May 31st. Thank you. Yes, from, oh, and Legal Shield, I'm sorry. Legal Shield, we just sent a communication. You all would have received this as well with that new enhanced plan. We'll have our representative on site this Thursday up here in the IT conference room from 10 to noon, and then over at Pinecrest, I might have gotten that wrong, will be there in the afternoon. I might have had those flipped. But anyway, so we have employees signing up to, or at least not signing up. You can come in at any time to visit with him about utilizing legal services or identity theft services as well. And then I do have the final contracts that are coming to be signed by Chris. Those have already been approved, so they won't come back to the board, other than to just be placed on file, and then they'll also be placed on file with PERB. So the last one that we have to send out is ASME, that's Unit 6, 7, and 8. That's Attorney, Conservation, and Public Health. The others have been sent out for review by the unions. Our final, kind of make sure there's no final adjustments and things like that, so. All right, a lot going on in HR, so thank you. Any questions at all?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, other department heads?
Good morning, Board. Caitlin Emmerich, Public Health Director. I would like to introduce our new Deputy Director for Public Health this morning. Ty, come over. I'm going to embarrass her by reading her bio, so. So Ty comes to us from Buchanan County Public Health, where she served as the Director since 2017. She served as Deputy Director from 2014 through 2017, and was a public health nurse from 2011 through 2014. She comes to us with 23 years of experience as a registered nurse. In her role at Buchanan County, Ty developed robust experience in disease investigation, immunization promotion and administration, community health needs assessments, health promotion programming, emergency preparedness, budgeting, strategic planning, partnership development, and policy development. Ty also held positions as a pediatric nurse at St. Luke's Hospital, and as a pediatric case manager at Visiting Nurse Association, and as a practical nursing instructor at Kaplan University. Ty serves on numerous boards and committees on various topics, including employee wellness, substance use, opioid settlement funds, volunteer services, critical incident stress management, maternal health, public health preparedness, emergency services, and community health improvement. Ty was recognized by the University of Iowa College of Public Health as a 2022 Public Health Hero. She also received the State of Iowa Immunization Champion Award in 2017. During her time at St. Luke's, she received the Rookie of the Year and the Story of Excellence recognitions. She led Buchanan County through the transition of taking on the role of fiscal agent for a 14-county service area, including our own Black Hawk County, ensuring that public health preparedness and EMS funding would continue to be available to the counties in the service area. Ty's educational preparation includes a Master of Public Health from Des Moines University, which is an accredited program by the Council on Education for Public Health. She also received a Bachelor of Science in Nursing from Mount Mercy College and an Associate's Degree of Nursing from Kirkwood. Ty brings a wealth of local public health experience to Black Hawk County Public Health. I'm very excited to have her join our team. Her first day was yesterday. Is there anything you'd like to share?
Not really. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to work here in Black Hawk County. I really look forward to working with a great group of people that I met yesterday and hopefully can continue to work with and remember their names. There's a lot of them. I came from a department of four, including myself, so this will be a big change for me. Thank you.
Welcome to Black Hawk County. We're happy to have you. All right.
Gabby DeWitt, Marketing Coordinator. I just wanted to touch base with the Board regarding the CGI video digital project. I've talked to a couple people, but not really gotten any good direction on which way we should go. We're at a point to start planning the video showcase, but I just wanted to find out from you if it's as simple as you want me to update the letter and keep going forward, or if you would prefer to have it as an agenda item next week. I can do that as well, but I just wanted to get some direction.
All right, what's the desire?
Proceed.
Yeah, I think we can just continue to move forward with it. I don't think we need an additional agenda item unless there's...
Yeah, as long as they don't, I mean, if they mess up again, they're out.
So, and I will go ahead and up... Yeah, and prior, the welcome letter had Chris's name on it as the Board Chair. I will just revise that to just Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors, and then have my name assigned to it as far as who they can contact.
And you had that conversation, it sounds like, with them, or you've been...
Yes, yep, yep. We've been in communication, and I have a meeting next week with the producer to kind of start planning shots, but I wanted to just get some feedback from the Board on what you wanted us to do.
Was there anything we should do, where there were some businesses, I think, that were kind of concerned or had indicated that, you know, I think thus contacting them or wasn't sure if it was really legitimate?
Right.
Is there anyone we should touch base with, or...
You can send them to me. There is a press release pinned on our website with some links and stuff in it. It is, you know, a marketing project, so they will be solicited for sponsorships. They can say no, but if they do decide to do it, then their logo is around the videos. But if anybody has any questions, that, last week it just came up when I was out of the office, so unfortunately. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention is all of the departments are getting really excited about having some videos about them, and so we are doing some elections videos to prepare for the elections, the primary election coming up. And I got to go out with Griffin and get some video of him hydro seeding and mulching on Friday, and that was a lot of fun, so follow our Facebook page.
That's good stuff.
Yeah, it was fun, yeah. Thank you.
All right, any other department heads or elected officials wish to provide an update this morning?
Yeah, Chris, Mike Kendrickson, Director of Black Hawk County Conservation.
Yes.
I would like to just quickly run over our ARPA projects and kind of give you an update as to where we are with all of those. I believe conservation, if I counted right, I think we have nine projects on board for ARPA. And so very quickly, I'm going to start with the ones that are basically finished. First of all, Hickory Hills wastewater treatment facility. We are literally just waiting for vegetation to grow so that we will comply with the SWIP permit, and that project is finished. That system's been operating since last summer, and so we just need some grass to grow, and that one is finished. We did take possession of the mini bus several weeks ago. It was literally yesterday taken to a company to be wrapped, and when that's all finished, I will do a presentation to the Board so that you can see all the Hartman characters and everything that encompasses the wrap that's being put on it. And we are lining up a very tight schedule for everything that that bus will be doing, so we're very excited about that. The Sigal Cove Shower Facility is finished. Our staff finished the sidewalk just a couple of weeks ago, the ADA sidewalk. Great addition to that little park, and people are already, we're already getting comments, positive comments from that, so very happy with that. The Black Hawk Park Shower Facility, that was some renovation inside, putting some floor drains in and partitions and things like that. We would have done the walkthrough last week had the river not come up into the park, so we will reschedule that with the contractor, and it is basically finished. Now with the projects that are still, you know, in place, starting with Cedar Valley Nature Trail, the nine and a half miles of paving, the contractor has started on that again at the 1st of May. He is doing his prep work for the asphalt company. They will begin work on that nine and a half miles of asphalting around the middle of June. They think it will take them a couple of weeks if the weather's good. Shoulder work will take place, and then that will be done. Division 2, the bridges, we are, I'm not there today because in just a few minutes, we're going to have a pre-construction meeting with our engineer right here in our office, so we will get that kicked off after today. That's bridges in the north unit, and some asphalt paving there. The HVAC system here at the administrative headquarters is under contract. We've had our pre-construction meeting, and they are preparing to move forward with that project. Let me see on my list here. The ADA Playground, we are under contract with that. Staff, as we speak today, are pouring pads, concrete pads. We wanted to put as much of that money towards playground equipment as we could, so we are covering the cost of the concrete pads, but those will all be ready. Playground equipment, they tell us, is somewhere around four to five weeks out to be delivered, and then the company will come in. They say they can install everything if we're ready within two weeks. So all four of those play equipment areas will be done in two weeks, once they get the equipment. McFarland Park Septic System, we finally got notice from the DNR. Our engineer has gotten the permitting that we needed to move forward with that project. That will be a new septic system for that park, and so that is underway. And I think I have, the only other thing then was the Wi-Fi at Big Woods Lake, and we are moving forward with that. We've just had a few little glitches with getting that under contract, but we're just about ready to go. So we are almost under contract with all nine projects. Do you have any questions at all?
That's great.
Thank you, Mike.
Great news. Thanks, Mike.
All right, any other department heads or elected officials wish to provide an update this morning? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the minutes approved from the May 7, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, minutes are approved. There will be two hearings coming up, a 9:05 and a 9:07. Both are hearings on fiscal year '25 crack ceiling projects. Those will be a little bit later in the agenda. Next we will move on to the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Move on to Item 8. This is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution to approve amending the professional services contract with Modus Engineering of Waterloo, Iowa for the Conservation Administration Office HVAC System Replacement Project for Black Hawk County, and utilizing American Rescue Plan funds for the construction administration services. Contract amendment number one for construction administration services for this project is not to exceed an amount of $5,500 for said services. The same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by the Board of Supervisors utilizing American Rescue Plan funds.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Move on to Section 9. This is Item A. This is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing slash bid opening to be held at 9:05 a.m. on May 28, 2024, in Boardroom 201 of the Black Hawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed purchase of body worn and vehicle mounted cameras and digital evidence management system.
Morning, Board. L U I T Director, just here in case you have any questions for me.
Any questions? Does someone like to offer a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Next we will move on to Item B. This is discussion, possible board action, approval to establish a committee to be named later that focuses on representing the needs of a diverse workforce and community, eliminating barriers to overcome inequities, and intentionally creating a space for individuals to feel welcomed and valued in Black Hawk County. We had, I've been meeting with Amanda and Gabby initially, and then we talked to the department head meeting last week. And this is really recognizing, you know, this is the most diverse county in the state of Iowa, and we want to, you know, just make sure that we're doing all the things that we reasonably can to make this, you know, an inclusive environment through all the services that we deliver, and making sure that we're looking at it through all the different lenses that people come to this courthouse or any of our buildings with to seek services, as well as just the overall kind of environment that we have here amongst our workforce. So I'll let Amanda add some to that.
Sure, so thank you. So this did come before us recently. There's just been more interest from employees, department heads, from our office as to how we advance our efforts when it comes to representing and meeting the needs of a diverse community and workforce that fosters that inclusive atmosphere, not only internally, but externally. So that's where this committee concept was really developed, or I guess kind of that idea as to bring together multiple respective voices to kind of assist and participate in this effort to increase our efforts around how do we become a sense of belonging and increase that. I know we talked about it with our logo and our rebranding, and a lot of the messaging in that was around how do we kind of act more as one and unify under that logo as well, and what that really represents and means. So this kind of takes that even a step further. It aligns well with our strategic planning, I believe, that we're going to be talking about next, as currently our strategic plan doesn't really highlight or reference a lot of the areas that I think we could improve and just understand better when it comes to serving the needs of our communities and our employees. So there's been a lot of great suggestions already, and again, the committee can be made up of really anybody that's interested in participating in this type of work. Doesn't have to be just leaders. It can be, I would like, you know, to be a range of levels of employment here, everything from frontline staff to frontline supervisory to a department head. And then we want to open it up to all departments, so we do anticipate this to be a larger committee. It wouldn't be limited to like five or something like that. But I sent you guys just some suggestions of what I kind of feel this committee could focus on. As for the name, we just felt that that was something the committee should help to determine. There's a lot of different titles that can be put around this, and then that's something that we could come back to the Board and for their final approval on the actual name of the committee. So we hope this aligns well with the strategic plans in the future in that it does represent, you know, our workforce and our communities and the services that we provide, and continue to work towards that inclusive and welcoming and belonging feel that Black Hawk County has, and that we just continue to highlight that and focus on it with this committee, so.
Well, between the two of you, I think you've kind of addressed my questions with it, because it wasn't really that we had concerns or that we weren't doing it. It's just that we can all do something better or make it more inclusive and recognize the efforts that we all probably can make, instead of just the HR department or groups. I know we've talked about the recruitment and retention and how critical that is for an outreach into the community and thinking we're doing it, but yeah, always looking at ways to improve, so I appreciate that. I was wondering when you said committee, too, because like to say to open that up to everyone, there might be a lot more people, I would think, interested in being a part of it, and didn't want to really see it limited, but knowing that could be tough, too, to have a really large group and ever...
So our plan, if this moves forward, would be to kind of send out communication and just solicit interest. You know, and if we would get a large number of interested parties, you know, contributing, then we probably would have to limit it to some degree. One thing we talked about, you know, if we have one department that is heavily interested over another department that doesn't have, you know, as much interest, or maybe not, maybe it's outside their comfort zone, whatever may be that barrier, but trying to just make it where at least we have somebody from each department, and it's not too heavily, you know, not all of conservation, or not all of public health, or not all of law enforcement, because we want that well-rounded experience. That's really important to the services we provide, and that we can kind of, as a organization, learn from each other and network as to, you know, while this area of this type of work might make sense for law enforcement, it doesn't necessarily make sense for elections or for treasure or for public health. So definitely hoping to have a, you know, a good amount of interest from the different departments, but we'll send that out, and then we hope to have, what, I think, a first meeting yet this month. And so we'll be working with Chris and Gabby to get that organized, but...
And we discussed if there is kind of an overwhelming interest. One thing that we could do is identify folks from different departments as alternate members, because, you know, things come up and you have to miss meetings, and then that just kind of increases the reach of participation that we could have.
And I think it was also even mentioned, subcommittees was another example, where maybe, you know, there's just a significant interest from, say, public health, who this work is so important to their mission and everything that they carry out, but that if they have a strong response, that that might be a subcommittee of this that they could have that could target some of their services a little bit more, or their workforce, and be tailored to them a little bit, but...
Do we see this as a policy changing or need for policy at all, or is this just addressing, for the most part, kind of behavior?
I think, I mean, we could see policy recommendations come out of it.
Definitely, yep. So, and I would say too, again, kind of following in line with the strategic planning. I think that can help to establish that, like where we're heading. And again, it's not that their efforts haven't been done right now. And again, it's not that their efforts haven't been done right now. It's just more putting it on paper, making a commitment to it and then demonstrating those actions and sharing those achievements is an area that I think we could just, that this committee could help us with. So because we do have examples of things that we've done, they've kind of been done more on an individual department basis that we could kind of bring up and elevate it to the organization as a whole and maybe used in other areas. So but yeah, I appreciate your guys' consideration for this effort and appreciate Gabby and Chris for the discussions and dialogue and the department heads. And we will be looking forward to seeing this get approved and starting the committee.
I just have one question.
Yes.
So many county cities, different ones have diversity, inclusion committees or groups and that type of thing. You didn't choose to call it that or is it because we see it broader or something different, I guess, too?
I think what we really wanted to, I mean, lots of times in this work, you don't know what you don't know. I mean, you don't know what lenses like other people see things through that you don't catch. And so that's why we, I kind of intentionally really wanted to kind of gather that more collective input on what's the most effective kind of naming for this group. And then we would, you know, have to bring that back to the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not that it couldn't, it could end up being called something like that, absolutely.
Sure.
It could be, you know, it could be called something different and it could, it just kind of depends on what I think the committee feels, you know, resonates best and is received, you know, in a way that sometimes those efforts can get, I guess, that DEI. I know we have at the state level and different things where that's not as accepted and there's actually measures being taken away from a DEI coordinator or a position, especially at the higher education systems and things like that. However, we just feel it made more sense for not us to decide that and even not for the board, but get that feedback from the committee as to what makes sense for Blackhawk County.
And the brand that you're kind of looking at so that the community gets it, I guess, understands.
But certainly if that's, if it's, if it's a diversity, equity and inclusion committee, then and if that's what everybody agrees to, or if it's something that highlights more belonging or inclusivity, you know, we're going to let the committee kind of vet that out and help guide them to that naming. So and then come back to the board.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the intentionality of it. I think a lot of times it's something that folks feel like, oh, we're doing a good job and so let's just keep doing what we're doing. But to take a critical eye, not in a, not in a, in a deconstructive way, right? But to take an eye towards policies, take an eye towards the environments in which we're hiring folks. I think it's, I think it shows a really good trajectory for the county, for us to be thinking about inclusion in this way, so.
Yep. And I'm hopeful that we'll get a lot of interest. I think we already have some that are ready to kind of submit their interest. And yeah, it's a, I think it's going to be a great committee and one that will just, again, highlight what we're doing and also we can learn and evolve and grow from there. And then it will align really well, I think, with the strategic planning as you guys look at your vision and, you know, the mission of Blackhawk County. I would expect this will be addressed and incorporated in there. As Chris said, we have a very diverse community that we serve, so. All right. Any other questions, thoughts? Did you want to add anything? All right.
Would someone like to offer a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to establish the committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Jelka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes. Resolution is approved. All right. Next, we'll move on to discussion, possible board action that the board solicit a proposal for auditing services with Clifton Larson Allen, LLP Alexandria, Minnesota, including a three-year time period with the option of a two-year annual extension. I know that Michelle is not here today, but I had had just a brief discussion with her about auditing services and it was kind of a limited number of options that are, that are out there to choose from and that it might be beneficial to solicit a proposal from Clifton Larson to continue with them.
I think we've been pleased with the work and the working relationship with the staff and has made it easier as well, like having something in place. And I think when we did this last year, I think they were so busy, they weren't able to make a proposal. And it was really kind of, we'd have to go out and try to find someone again. I'm not sure if that's where we're at again. It could be because they seem to have more work than projects.
This would be the time to do it, right? If we wait a whole lot longer, we're going to get back into another audit process, so.
Yeah.
So we'd like a motion for that or is anybody else have questions, comments, I guess, whether thoughts?
I didn't take a motion if there's nothing, any questions?
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to solicit a proposal for auditing services with Clifton Larson Allen, LLP of Alexandria, Minnesota, including a three-year time period with the option of two annual extensions. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Chris, did you say we're going to put it out for bid?
I, no, this is, this is listed a proposal from them, from, from Clifton Larson.
So we're not going to bid, we're not going to bid the services then?
That is correct, if, if you're voting yes on this.
Okay, no.
Jelka.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes. Resolution is approved. All right. Item D, this is discussion, possible board action regarding strategic planning. We did have the one presentation from, from Mr. Gannett. Say his last name correct, right? I believe.
Garnett. I think it's Garnett.
Yeah, that's right. Garnett. And I know some, some on the board would have some familiarity with the last strategic plan that was done. I forget the, the name of the UNI Institute.
IDM.
IDM, yes. And so it's really, I mean, it's a question of do we, are we ready to make a decision to go with one or the other? Do we need more information from them? I thought this, this last week I'd have a little more time to dig in and research on this and I, but I did not. I'm writing three federal USDA grants and it's a lot of work, but, but it's, so really I just like, you know, the board's input on, on what decisions we're ready to make or what more information that we need to make that decision.
Did we get much back from you and I?
No.
I don't recall. I remember them sending out the survey.
They did. The questions and we all five did and everything. They were very pleased. I mean, as we were, I think that all five, they got responses from all five of us too. And they had told us at the time that they were going to be busy until May, that there was no way they could come because I, when I had approached them, I'd ask for kind of like that 30-minute commercial if they could come in and just meet with the board and tell us, you know, what they propose and how that would work or what they would be doing. And they apparently didn't have the time to do that. So that's why we did the question answer thing and got that from them. And the last I heard, I pulled back that email that I'd gotten from Drew, which is really where we wanted to start, I think, when we first said, could you come in and do the commercial? It was like recognizing then some of the levels of questions that they were going to be, when, when did we want to involve the public or if we did, how, many, who, and that type of thing. But and the things that I, I know from working with them last time and one of the things that, a couple of things they mentioned, I guess, were who should be represented on the planning team? Who would be responsible for working with the facilitators to develop a draft plan? And I thought, well, that was going to be all of us. I mean, for the most part, working with the facilitator, it wasn't going to be someone designated. And I think that's really what we'd had before. There'd been one supervisor in particular, I think, that worked with them and kind of coordinating things. And also, I think for the most part, there was probably only two supervisors that attended all the meetings. So it was a much different exercise than what we were planning, I think. Their last question was what time horizon will a strategic plan cover for the years three, five or 10, that type of thing, I think, because it had been a long one previously. I think when they started, and I could be wrong on some of the dates, I think it was like in 2008, they'd done the initial and then come back in 13. And that's when I was here and part of it, so when we did kind of an up on the plan. But I know after he sent this email at the end of April, it said, sorry about requesting all the details, trying to get around the county's needs, but he said, it probably would be easier for us to have a conversation. Yeah, I, I think, but it's, yeah, so I don't know. I, you all know, like I said, I think, I thought Ted Garnett, he did a much different exercise. It was much more, I shouldn't say intense, but from a strategic planning standpoint that I've gone through those exercises, we all have, I'm sure, in different organizations and groups. And his method was much different. To me, it was a little more intense, but I liked that, I guess, just because it would have five different personalities to draw out that information and be very direct. And that was one of the things I have liked about it. The other, as I've thought about it, because we've had so much time really to think about it, was the fact that, I know we talked about strategic planning years ago with staff and staff kind of working through it. Some of that was more budget related. And it was still difficult for staff to do that when you kind of have to walk that fine line of working for the board and then, you know, pulling that information. And so I kept reflecting back on that and I then really kind of related that to IDM, I think. I don't know if all of us have worked with them, but we've all been involved with them, know them well. They've worked with us on not only on this, but in other areas, we've all had those relationships. And I thought as a, I don't know, that it'd be a strength or some resource for us, for someone that didn't know us and our personalities and to pull us together or however that worked or pull out that information and without thinking about our personalities and our feelings and how they needed to be sure to get consensus by us being in agreement, that it could be difficult.
That could be entertaining.
Yeah, pay-per-view.
Well, it might be people pay for it, but I just thought it puts them, I thought, in an awkward position, I guess, to do that with us. But I just wondered if maybe in my thoughts were just that maybe Ted Garnett, who didn't know us, would do that more directly and walk away and not be, you know, someone we'd work with next week or next month or whatever. So I appreciated that outward, I guess, counsel or something, something like that. But and then I think there's also a piece to it that working to get us, it was something that we didn't do and I don't know that IDM would do, but I know with our previous work and I think you've all taken a look at this, when we've done it, and it was no fault of theirs, I'm not saying any fault of ours either, but the, the follow-up and the doing the work and that, everybody got busy with what they do and it was, it ended up in being something that sat more on the shelf and was there and some of you utilized it. Some of the departments were good, some were, you know, struggling with trying to make those things work. So it was also a different approach and so that's.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think a key point to ensure that it doesn't just become a document that sits on the shelf is to give it a shorter lifespan. So I, I mean, I think a three-year makes sense. We can be held, the goals are a little bit more attainable in a three-year than, I mean, a 10-year, you know, 10 years ago, any of us, right? Like everything was just so different and so, even five. Yeah, three, three really does feel like an opportunity for us to keep that document fresh, to keep it sort of top of mind a little bit more so. It's never going to be, a strategic plan is never going to be this, this thing that literally drives every single decision, but hopefully it's a lens in which we can, we can approach problems. I'm comfortable with a three-year. I agree with your point about there might be some real value in having someone who's not associated sort of locally, right? That, that, that knows, that, that doesn't have to worry about seeing us at the grocery store, right? And they can just sort of say what it is versus having to do the political dance and, you know? Because, you know, that, that gets, that gets a little tough. But it is now May, so maybe you and I could find time to present.
Well, I think what bothered me was that some of the questions they were asking were the things that we were going to have difficulty in. We were expecting them or someone to pull that from us and working with us, not just us saying, this is what we want, this is how we want it done, this is who we'll be facilitating with you. It's going to be finding out what five people want.
Yeah.
And that's where it kind of went. The other thing, and obviously I kind of leaned toward Garnett for several reasons that I've mentioned to you, that, that Lynn County, you know, I'd use them, Story County had different ones that spoke well of them leading a county initiative. But then as we talked to others, individuals, then we had some staff, even I know Caitlin particularly had worked with him. And so it was not just hearing from a supervisor's perspective or someone in the county that said, yeah, they did a great job. It was hearing about that and I don't know if that's anything you'd want to speak to or comfortable speaking to, to share with good, bad or ugly.
Yeah, sure. I'm happy to. Obviously, I haven't worked with IDM, so I don't have anything to compare to, but I have worked with Mr. Garnett when I was an employee at Lynn County. And I have probably like yourselves been through a couple of different iterations of strategic planning. And if I had to rank all the different facilitators, I'd say he's at the top of the list for ability to pull out what the really important things are and to be able to help prioritize what those are because everybody wants everything. I think he used the pet something example during his presentation. And so I would really look forward to working with him again, if given the opportunity.
Yeah, it seemed like one thing that I kind of picked up on kind of personality-wise that I liked, you know, oftentimes when there's a more delicate subject or something, people avoid it, they dance around, but he seemed to be the kind of guy that would name the thing in the room. And so I think that would be really beneficial.
Yep.
Till he, till he men, yeah, until he does it. What?
Yeah.
Any thoughts on good, bad or ugly? And some of the, something that I'd written down, and I think I'd even talked about it when we, I was eager to hear when we'd had a department head meeting and they shared comments and things was, he was mentioning and he said, without planning, because you have a good team, without planning, you'll get two or three things done because you have good people. With planning, you'll get seven to 10 things done. And over time, this makes a difference. And I just thought since we're looking at kind of making a difference in what we can do and how we're doing things differently and touching, obviously, on something that we did earlier as far as inclusivity, it's just that that's kind of what we're trying to do, I guess, and make that difference, but.
Well, I think we essentially have, we've got two decisions or two directions I see that we could go. We could either make the decision today of who to go with or we could kind of, if, because we don't want to wait too much longer, if, see if IDM could present within two weeks, we could, we could give them that kind of option. But I'm, but I'm perfectly comfortable going with Mr. Garnett.
How comfortable are you?
I am.
Make sure you're comfortable.
I'm good.
Okay.
How about you, Tom?
Yeah, I think he'd be great. Really do.
That sounds like, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Would someone like to make the motion?
I would.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to, I guess I'll say pursue the services of Mr. Garnett for strategic planning.
Sure. Get him, see what, what's on his schedule and what he can do with us quickly, hopefully, or to get started.
Yeah.
We can start a Netflix sitcom and generate royalties for the county.
Yeah, we need those new revenue streams.
Years ago, they had some of those entertaining meetings now. Yeah, back to that. So you need a resolution or is it just motion, did you say?
Have we had a, I'll do a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Short?
Yes. Resolution is approved. It is now 9:48 a.m. This is a hearing slash bid opening on proposed fiscal year 25 Praxeling Project versus a motion received and placed in file, proof of publication, May 4, 2024, notice of public hearing.
Second.
Both second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, opposed motion carries. Next is a motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
Any written comments, Mr. Veder?
No, sir.
All right, let's see, have you heard, oral comments? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Well, opposed, motion carries. Next is the bids to be received, open and read, the bid deadline was 3:00 p.m., Monday, May 13, 2024.
It's like we've received four electronic bids.
Is this the LL 7725, or the 7525?
7725.
It's the.
Crack filling.
The crack filling.
Oh, yeah, crack filling and seal coating, okay.
Okay, we do have some, well, good.
And we, I should say, it is crack filling, which is a little bit different technique than crack sealing. We've switched to our vendors doing crack filling now. And the engineer's estimate was $172,353.60. So, our first bid is from Farner Asphalt Sealers, $483,043.8. They are, they are on the screen, so I won't repeat that. The second bid comes from Denko Highway Construction Corporation, $157,941.68. Third bid is Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation, $216,560. And then the final bid, number four, is American Pavement Solutions Incorporated, $192,919.40.
What's the location of these?
Farner, I believe, is Ford Dodge, I believe, or, I am not sure on that one.
Okay.
Kathy, have we used any of them before?
Yes, we've used, I think we've used, I'm not quite sure about Asphalt Surface Technologies, but Farner we've used, Denko does all of our grouting, and then I believe last year, wasn't last year, it's been American Pavement Solutions.
Okay.
Quite a range.
Thank you.
It'll be interesting to see.
Did you have, sorry, locations on Denko, Aztec, and American Pavement?
American Pavement Solutions, I believe, is Green Bay, Wisconsin. Denko's here in Iowa, I think. They're in Iowa, Farner's in Iowa. And the last one, I'm not too familiar with them. Ryan's saying they're a new bidder.
Okay.
It's all over the board.
Right?
It's all over the board.
That's what I mean, I wonder if they include the same things, that'll be interesting.
I think there's gold flakes in the wood.
Must be. Filling with what?
That's all we have for that one.
Okay, so that's it. So, need a motion?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. A motion that the board of supervisors review and place on file the bids to allow time to receive, review said bids as recommended by Kathy Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed motion carries. It is now 9:53 a.m. This is a hearing slash bid opening under proposed fiscal year 24 Seal Coating Project. This is a motion received and placed in file, proof of publication, May 4, 2024, notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed motion carries. Next is a motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Any written comments, Mr. Veder?
No, sir.
Any oral comments? Let's see, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the motion carries. Next to the bids will be received, open and read, the deadline was 3:00 p.m., Monday, May 13, 2024.
I did want to clarify that this is FY '25 Seal Coating Project, I'm sorry, there's a typo on the agenda.
Okay.
And the engineer's estimate was $132,155. We'll proceed with the paper bids first.
That one is up, if you want to read that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, our electronic bid is from Farner Asphalt Sealers, $131,639.60. The second bid is from Prairie Road Builders, Hazleton, Iowa, they have submitted the bid Third bid comes from Stabilt Construction Company, Harlan, Iowa, they have also submitted Next bid is from Blacktop Service Company, Humboldt, Iowa, they have submitted the bid
Kathy, did you say they were from Harlan?
Blacktop Services is from Humboldt, Iowa, is what they're.
It shows Cedar Falls on here.
Yeah, their, the actual proposal shows Humboldt, Iowa, and I believe that's the correct location.
You wanted to say Humboldt, okay.
The last bid comes from Anats Incorporated, Brooklyn, Iowa, they have submitted the bid
All right, thank you. Next is a motion that the board of supervisors review and place on file the bids to allow time to review said bids as recommended by Kathy Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved. Second.
So it moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Well, opposed, the motion carries. Next, item 10, this is, any reports or information from the board?
No reports or information, other than, I was going to say, the chairman, or the chairman of the VA Commission mentioned there were interviews set up for Monday and Tuesday, I didn't know, and I assumed whoever would attend probably would need to be at all five, participate in those. I didn't know if that was going to work for anyone, I just.
You said it's set up on Monday and Tuesday?
I think it was Monday and Tuesday, yes. I knew that wasn't going to be so easy when you had so many. It was Monday, the 20th, from 2:00 to 3:00, because they're doing about 30 minutes per interview, so that timeline was Monday, the 20th, 2:00 to 3:00. Tuesday, the 21st, is 11:30 to 1:00 for the three. Does that work for anybody? I was going to say, I can, I can make it work, too.
I'm looking at my calendar.
What was the Tuesday timing then?
Tuesdays were 11:30 to 1:00, you know, there's 11:30 to 12:00, or 12:30.
I think that, I think I can make, make those work. I think it'd be good to have two of us, just in case someone, like, can't get all of it, that we can confer later, but.
Okay.
I can, if I can zoom in.
Yeah, they were going to have a Zoom link, and said they'd furnish that, so.
Dan, if you'd like to do it, that'd be great.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do it.
All right, if it works, I will, too, then, if that works.
Yeah.
If we use schedules, okay, all right.
Of the, I'll add, is an update on the Middle Cedar River watershed. One, I've got, anybody that's interested in the big, hard copy of our, of our plan, it's, you know, a good-sized book, and it's a lot of technical information, but if anybody wants a copy of that, I can get that to you. I'm going to be submitting copies to at least all the public universities in the state, so that it has a place to live in perpetuity, just in case it happens, but hopefully, we implement everything that's in that plan, because we've got federal funds coming through. And on that note, sure, working as a watershed on a grant right now that would take the dues that we pay and other counties and communities pay, and leverage that and help us be able to hire a coordinator for the Middle Cedar River, so I'll keep you all updated on, on how that progresses. The other thing is, you know, I, I heard the news driving home on public radio yesterday about lawsuit, and just that there's potentially an ACLU class action lawsuit, and just wanted to make sure that we have something on next week's agenda, whether it needs to be a closed session, or otherwise, so that we can kind of get up to speed on, on what's, what's happening with that.
I definitely advise that it be a closed session.
Okay.
I, I can, if it's possible to get right in a little bit more, even, does it have to be Tuesday, or can we do one on Thursday? I'd like to know a little bit more.
Sooner or later.
Well, you know, I think we're all starting already to hear some questions, and I think it makes sense for us, if, if we can facilitate a Thursday morning, if that works for folks.
Sure, I'm wide open.
Yep.
I think it's important that it also work for Sheriff Thompson as well, or at least somebody from the sheriff's office.
Yeah, yeah, anticipate he could make that work.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should go for Thursday morning if.
That worked for you, too?
Yep.
Because I'm, that's tricky. Okay, at least try for it, I guess, we'll see what the schedules, and maybe there's another option he can throw up.
Sure.
And I mentioned, too, the Humane Society, we've given them, they're going to commit to the 28th, they'll be back here.
Okay.
Just going to give an FYI on that. And I did go to Elevate, visit Elevate the other day, and I had just mentioned to Bob Lincoln, you know, that I was, we had the opioid funds, and I was kind of surprised they hadn't submitted something, because they have so many programs that they're dealing with, and he said, if the board was interested at all, he'd put together like a one-page document for us to see if you were, had more interest in him doing something further, and so, I just, okay, well, tell him to prepare it, okay, thank you.
Those monies are a godsend for what we're trying to accomplish.
All right, any other reports or information from the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.